Twenty one.
How you ever get the mileage down, right? Every time I try to sit back thinking about the mileage, I remember it about two weeks after I get back to the house.
But I'll tell you, I sat down and went and thanked Bo and Boo before we left and we're going to Boo's Mr. I feel like we've been a mean mile, not far away.
You seen fires since when the smoke?
Well, I wish I knew where they're located. They're up in midsection there. That's south of Rio Grande. Nine dollars up the road from Allos.
Isn't it pretty?
Yes.
The cones.
The valley. The way you're walking along.
All right, I'm getting nine o'clock. We will, I will call Commissioners Court for a regular meeting. Possession, um, standing, ask Commissioner Darden to, uh, certification and remain standing for the flesh plate.
Father, as many who come to you, Lord, just ask you, be with this court today, Lord, all the decisions we make here, Lord, just ask him, that's in Montecity County, Lord, and just be with, uh, everyone here that makes up this county government, Lord, just ask you to put things in their heart, Lord, to give the people what they need and want and want. You plan in our lives, Lord, just ask you, Lord, also to be in this time, be just near us and protect us, Lord, and just pay and put a heathen hand on those that are affected right now, Lord, but is also, Lord, have a special prayer this morning, uh, Mark Murphy, Lord, just put him back in good shape, Lord, continue to heal him. Lord, just ask you to put a hand on this country at this time, Lord. This is a very unrested time that we're having, Lord, just ask you to put a hand on each heart and everyone to get along as this election comes up, Lord, just ask you to be with us, right, same way.
Lady Releas, this is an iron of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All in the Texas flag, our place is to be in Texas, one safe under God, one indivisible.
Item three, which is public comments. Do we have anybody here with public comments? Okay, we'll move on forward then to, to item four, which is our consent agenda. As it states, the consent agenda includes non-controversial routine items that the court may act on with one single vote. The judge or commissioners might pull any item from the consent agenda in order that the court discuss and act upon individually as part of the regular agenda. Our consent agenda today covers approval of minutes, examine all accounts and reports relating to the finances of the county, audit and settle all accounts against the county and direct payment, approval of payroll, and accept the county treasurer's report.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, I've got a motion by Commissioner Langford, a second by Commissioner Mayfield. They have any discussion? All in favor? All voting for. Item five is discuss and consider accepting the county attorney's chapter fifty-nine asset forfeiture report and take necessary action. I think in the, on that report, it looks like he's carrying his balance forward and there's been no additions or expenditures out of his account.
Correct. We have to be in district court. Um, I've reviewed it. It's ready for his signature in line. So, we just have people in court to order.
Motion to accept county attorney's chapter fifty-nine asset and forfeiture report. Give the ones that need the authority to say it.
Same. So, I've got a motion by Commissioner Langford and a second by Commissioner Mayfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All voting for. All right, item six, discuss and consider approving the twenty twenty tax codes pursuant to section twenty-six point zero nine of Texas property tax code and take necessary action. And I think Ms. Phillips is here. Would you like to speak to this?
The number of properties for the twenty twenty tax year is going to be one hundred thousand and eighty-two properties. And that's, of course, business property, real property, personal property, minerals. You know, that's a combined number. The taxable amount will be one billion nine hundred sixty-two million nine hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and nine. Then, of course, the tax we, um, are expected to receive on that is ten million six hundred, I'm sorry, ten billion. No, I'm sorry. Let me correct myself. Ten million six hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty and fifty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion for the tax codes and I won't repeat all that.
Second to that.
So, I've got a motion by Commissioner Mayfield and a second by Commissioner Langford. Any discussion? All in favor? All voting for. Item seven is discuss and consider approving order of election and notice of election for the state District Thirty runoff election and take necessary action. I think Ms. Watts here.
And I just wanted to request that we consolidate for this election, um, down to the four early voting precincts for early voting and election day.
Before that you guarantee, say, don't know, come to hear it, Booey.
Yes, sir.
That's good to me. I'll make the motion to approve that order with four early voting on and election day.
So, I've got a motion by Commissioner Langford. I've got a second by Commissioner Darden. Any discussion? All in favor? All voting for. Item A, discuss and consider approving an amendment to the current Texas Association of County Service Agreement and take necessary action. And I think, Jessica, are you going to speak to that?
Yes, I put this on here. I just wanted to, um, I would like to suggest that we add an SSL certificate. It's an add-on feature to our website that TAC hosts. It's an extra one hundred and fifty dollars a year, um, through TAC, and it's just an amendment to our current contract with them. But right now, um, when somebody goes to our website, it shows an unlocked icon like in the address bar, and the web browser will like warn them that the site is not secure. Um, we don't collect any personal information or credit cards on our website, and in the past, that's the only people who were recommended to have the like HTTPS or the SSL certificate were people who were collecting that information, but they recommend like any of the best practice, website best practice guides or anything that you can find online. They all recommend nowadays just because of all the hacking and, um, cyber crimes and everything to have the SSL certificate. So, one article that I read states that over fifty thousand websites are hacked each day and that forty-three percent of the cyber crimes are against small businesses. And that's probably because like we're always like, oh, well, we're too small. Nobody will do anything. It's not worth their time. But I guess that that's why most of the hackers target smaller businesses because they probably don't have the, you know, precautions in place like the bigger places do. Um, but anyway, if our website was hacked, even though we don't collect any personal information, if our website was hacked, the hacker could put like a malicious URL link on our website. And so if someone went to our website and clicked the link because they thought it was to check their tax records, you know, or something like that, it could actually download, uh, malware to that person's computer. And then it could steal their information. So even though we did not collect any of the information, their stuff could still be stolen if our website were hacked. So it's a hundred and fifty dollars a year. So I just would suggest it's out of precaution that it's just a hundred and fifty dollars. So I would feel more comfortable knowing that ours is secure and we don't have to run that risk.
So, early inexpensive insurance.
Yes. Piece of mind.
Voice to take this money.
I can take it out of my budget if we need to. I don't mind. Because it is just Because it is just a hundred and fifty. So um, I can probably work in my uh, backups. I've been canceling some of the backups, none of them moved over to the new server. So I don't know if it could come out of my rental agreements or where this would need. Or I can wherever you tell me I need to take it out of.
All of the Sierra bills are coming from the communication because it's, they handle our emails and our other stuff. So we could take it from communication and not departmental.
Well, even though we don't have, you know, paying credit cards or anything like that, it still sounds like a pretty good idea. Because I know when people go on there, that when it says non-secure, I, I, I very little don't know anything about email. But if I see something that's non-secure, I'm pretty cautious about anything I open. So I do like that. I'll make the motion to spend the hundred and fifty dollars to take it out of communication, why not? Give, or it needs the authority to sign.
The judge will just need to sign it.
We'll have to.
So.
And we'll amend the service agreement.
It's it. We need to go ahead and amend the service agreement with them.
Um, it's a, they sent us the application. It's just their generic. So all we're going to do is check um, on the last page. There's an option for, it's an add-on. And so that's what we're checking on that last page. So.
I put it forward, the motion to amend it.
Okay.
The service agreement include this hundred and fifty dollar secure website fee, take that of communication.
All right, so I've got a motion by Commissioner Langford, a second by Commissioner Darden. Any further discussion? All in favor? All moving. And then last item we have is discuss and consider the public interest in plat revisions.
This is just a simple deal. I asked to be put on the agenda. Has nothing to do with any subdivisions or anything. It's just, it brought to my attention that from, that we need to post when somebody approaches us about a revision on a subdivision plat or any type of change on it, needs to be put on the county website for at least thirty days before we make the motion and bring it to court. This was the easiest way for me to talk to all the commissioners at one time without violating anything. That's, that's the reason I put, just to make you aware. I got a copy of this subdivision, got a copy of this deal. Jessica give it to me. Over shows what needs to be done, what doesn't. So if you want one of them, she can email it to you. But it's just, it's just a deal they want us to do. And it's, it's in the local government code two thirty-two dash zero zero nine. If they want to see it, but it's just a, just a reminder to all. I know we have those head cases, we have to do revisions. I didn't know anything about this period now. Other than that, it's just kind of a explanation. They need any motion or anything.
And we talked to Debbie. If you could just, if you have something, if you could give it to her, she'll email me something. That way I can get it posted.
I think that's all we probably have to do to.
Just monitor that thirty day.
Yeah. It just says county must post notice of a proposed subdivision plat revision that do not impact public interest or public property. Regardless, only turn its internet website continuously for at least thirty days preceding the date of the meeting until the day after the meeting. So it's just something else they've come up with that they want to, want us to do, not a hoop anyway, but whatever it takes. Other than that, does that.
Does that mean new ones also? New plat?
It doesn't say anything about new plats, but I, I think it probably will include everything that has to do with the plat.
Yes, sir. It does include new plats. It's under the platting procedures on page ten in our subdivision.
So it's in there. So it's, I guess it's every plat has to be.
Yes, whether it's a revision or a new plat. Needs to be in the judge's office thirty days prior to any action being taken in court.
All right. So do I have a motion? Any further discussion on that? Would I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. And a motion by Commissioner Langford, second by Commissioner Darden, all in favor?